Call the City Council Work Session to order a court, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Gwensley.
Here.
Vining.
Here.
Germani.
Here.
Lomore.
Here.
Felder.
Here.
Whitman.
Mayor Clark.
Here. We have several items, so I think we'll get right to them. Mr. Pastu, first item.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first item I'd like to present tonight is the New Citizens Reporting System app. This is Jody Egan, our Director of Communications, is going to run through that with City Council.
We're going to swing this over here, little modification. So, we recently launched our new citizen reporting app. As you know, with the new website, we implemented a new citizen reporting module recently. The website was revamped, I think it was this past spring. And with that was a new feature where citizens could go online and report concerns, whether those be blight, grass cutting, potholes, et cetera. And city staff could address those concerns directly. One of the things that we found with that system was it didn't have kind of the back end meat that we needed internally to eliminate redundancy and really kind of speed up those responses. So, the new program that we have, the new interface, is called City Source. And there's two components to that, an online component and also a smartphone app that you can download. And what makes that so functional for us is that it shakes hands with our BSNA and Cartograph internal reporting systems. So, when a report is filed, it will integrate into our systems and generate a work order for staff that they can kind of go in and it'll be into their, in their daily work system. So, there's two ways to access the citizen reporting module. The first one is over the Internet here. And on our homepage, and there's several ways to reach it. On our homepage... Oh, there it is, okay. On the homepage, there's the "Report an Issue" here. The center carousel is some of the main navigation elements of the site. So, someone could hit "Report an Issue," and that will take them to our app information, or the web module. And here at the bottom, there's an introductory text. Of course, if you're reporting a non-emergency, you would utilize this. If you're reporting an emergency, you would call 911. But this allows a citizen to view issues within their area that are outstanding, and open issues. You can also create an issue here. And I'll walk you through how to do that on the app version of this. But you can select an issue type, where you can select for blight violations, forestry, garbage, et cetera, grass and weeds, law enforcement tips, which are anonymous, park maintenance, potholes, et cetera. So, the citizen can select an issue type. They can either enter an address. If you're using the app, the GPS will locate where you're at. And you can submit media in the form of pictures, audio, or video. And then, the great thing about it is it updates the citizen on the progress of the complaint, or the issue that's been submitted. So, it allows the staff to report back to the citizen. If it's in BSNA, and someone out in the field updates the BSNA program, it will automatically update the Civic Live, uh, this City Source component, and send that citizen an update. So, the great thing about it is it allows folks to kind of be in touch with the city staff and be able to kind of keep up on the status of their concern. This is what the web interface looks like. And I'll kind of show you here on a smartphone, really quickly. So, this is kind of what it looks like on an iPhone here. But this is mimicking that, but on the web version. So, if you were on your smartphone, this is the screen that you would see. At the bottom here is the service request. You can hit that to kind of create your own request. And you would go through the same process, where you would select a report type. The great thing about the app is you can either input an address, or you can have the GPS locate your area of concern, or where you're trying to file that concern from, the location of it. We'll just pick there. And then, you can add media, or whatever, more details if you'd like, a little text about the problem. Some issue types will allow you to keep them confidential. So, when I pulled up the map initially, you saw a map with a bunch of little location keys on it. Some of these you can make public, some of them are private, like law enforcement tip, blight. I think actually most of them have a "keep this confidential." That means that it won't show up on a public map. However, if you do use this system to file a complaint, or request, or file an issue, you'll have to create an account to log you in. And that just provides your contact information, so we can update you. But it doesn't mean, let's say, you know, I want to file a report on my neighbor who has maybe a blight infraction. I can file, create my account, put my information in, and say, "Please keep this anonymous." So, if that neighbor were to log onto the website, they wouldn't see their address listed as a blight violation. It would be kept internal in the city system. And we could work with that resident to resolve their issue. So, I'm not going to actually create a request, because we don't want to get that into the testing of the system. But the app also has a couple other features which make it a great citizen engagement tool. You can create a request. You can keep track of your own service requests. I don't have any in the system right now. But if I did, it would show me the report type, and the status of the request, and the messages that I've received on updates. You can look for nearby requests in the app. So, you can see here, these are all recent requests that have come in through the web portal. There's also other features, like information from our website. So, things that we thought would be the most useful for citizens to have kind of at hand in their pocket. So, general contact information, department listings, staff directories, hours, those are all things that will, if you click on them, will take you to our website, pages on our website. So, it'll redirect you to the information inside of the web. Another great thing about it is it has a "What's New?" section, and it also allows for push notifications. So, if you sign up, if you enable that within the app, if we update the status of your request, it'll give you a push notification to kind of let you know, or it can send you an email for those updates. But these other selections are kind of keys for the city website. All of these other links redirect to that section, where we can highlight different types of maps, or general information that would be of best use. For example, in the section, you know, the meeting for tonight, the agenda packets, those would all be redirected to those applicable websites. This map section is something we really look forward to expanding on as we explore GIS story maps with some of our resources, our local resources. Barry LaRoya recently did one for the River Raisin Legacy Project, where it takes people through some, kind of some key points around the community with interpretive information and GIS coordinates, so they can kind of follow along with some of that. So, that's kind of the brief overview. I promised I wasn't going to take a lot of time, because I know the agenda is pretty full tonight. So, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. It is a free download, and it's in iOS and Android. Our website has frequently asked question components as well. So, if you wanted to know some more detailed information about the, about the app itself, you know, why does it need my location, or what does it do with that location information once it's obtained, all that information is online and easily accessible. We also created kind of a little intro video that will kind of walk the citizen a little bit through the benefits of having the app and you logging the app for reporting. So, that was really good. Trying to make that as good as I could. Are there any questions?
All right. I'll see if there are any questions from Council. John?
Jody, does this app work outside the city limits?
Oh, that's a great question. The map is composed of different layers that we have within our Cartograph system, or GIS. And we have some customers of the city of Monroe that are not inside of our city boundaries, our water customers. So, for different report types, different maps are logged into that system that will allow you to report certain things within the city boundaries and others not. So, for example, if there's a pothole on Monroe Street, it is going to locate the boundaries of Monroe Street in that map. And if I try to submit a request in the township, it will say, "This location that you've submitted is within the township." You know, you can't, you know, it's not going to be able to file with the system. However, if I'm a water customer outside of the city of Monroe, and I log into the system to say I have, you know, an issue with my water service, it will allow you to file that. So, it takes advantage of different maps that we have created to kind of keep track of those type of concerns. Because, as you know, we field a lot of, I'm sure you do know, we field a lot of questions either online, phone calls from people in the townships, or that are trying to get some assistance. And of course, we redirect them to their appropriate local offices. But this will kind of help negate some of those, some of those fielding, some of those questions, too. That's a great question. Thank you for asking. Yes.
Is any of the personal information that will be shared in the account shared on any place outside of the city?
No. No, ma'am.
Thank you.
And that is also in FAQs. It goes into detailed information, and how we do utilize that. It's only solely for the purpose of contacting you, to get you up, so you that you're updated on, on the status. We want, we want you to keep track of it. And that will help us to correct, you know, or to address the situations more promptly if we have that contact information, and keep you up to date with the status of your submission.
One other question. Jody, if, if I was taking a picture of a pothole, and I don't know what the address is around me, does the system automatically assign an address based on the location?
Yes. Yes, it will. It'll, if your GPS is enabled on your phone, you know, if you allow it to use your GPS, because even on my iPhone, I would have to allow it to do that. There's always that hesitation on like Google, you know, Google wants to use your location. You're like, "No, no." So, for this, you would definitely want to allow it to utilize your GPS location. And if you're standing there and take a picture of it, it will pinpoint where you're at and submit the request that way.
Great. Other questions?
Very nice.
Good. Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Good job, Noah Ed and Jody, and a lot of the staff, and quite a bit on getting this implemented. And still, now we've got to work out the details, and make sure how even I struggle with some, a lot of the information in there. But it's going to be a great useful tool, I think. Appreciate it. Just, if I may, Your Honor, move forward.
What's the next item?
Next item I'd like to cover is the recycling market change. We have Mike Sapo, who is the General Manager for the Recycling, the, over there, the Resource Recovery Recycling Authority of South Oakland County. Mike had worked with us as a consultant in developing our requests for proposals related to the refuse, recycling, and yard waste materials. And as we had talked about it a couple weeks ago, the recycling market is kind of in flux. And I asked Mr. Sapo if he'd come and kind of give us a little background, what's going on, and what we may anticipate the market going in the future.
Good.
Well, thanks for having me. Nice seeing everybody again. So, as Vince said, and I guess apparently you guys have talked about it a little bit, the recycling market has changed somewhat over the past several months. It's actually something that's been going on for a couple of years. China is the, one of the primary downstream outlets for recyclable material is collected in the United States, particularly fiber material or mixed plastics, so paper and some lower grade plastics. And they recently began a series of steps to limit the amount of material that you can send to China. And in fact, they've pretty much put a halt to all scrap imports for the time being. And this caused a pretty serious disruption in the markets for recyclables. The issue really started before this recent U.S.-China trade dust-up. But the current tit-for-tat approach has actually just exacerbated the situation. The recycling material is currently being absorbed by domestic market, as well as some overseas markets. India, Malaysia, Vietnam are taking material. But as you might imagine, when you're looking at a major player of material absorption like China, that capacity isn't replaced overnight. And so, what we're seeing in the marketplace are some, some lower pricing, and in some cases dramatically so, for some grades of material, mixed paper, newspaper, and lower grades of plastic. And then, we're also seeing an increase in the specification requirements. So, this began with China saying, "We don't want your, you know, frankly, your crappy material." The Chinese action is a little bit misguided. The President Xi is trying to improve the environment in China, and he's scapegoating some of the recyclable material that was imported to China. If you, if you look at the real situation, it's not the fault of the material that's being imported. While there are admittedly, you know, some actors that have shipped some material that not as high quality as it could have been, or should have been, it's really what they do with the material when they get it over there. And it's probably more a commentary on the regulatory framework in China, and perhaps the socioeconomic fabric, as opposed to the material itself. But be that as it may, China says they won't take any more material. They won't take any more material, and the rest of the market has to absorb it. What's that, what's its cause is really sort of several things. One is an increase in the, the control that those other market players have. They can demand a higher quality product at a lower price. So, that's, that's one impact. So, the higher quality product. And of course, the second, the related impact is much lower quality, or lower price for the material. You've seen in some cases, and we've actually done it at our facility in Southfield, where we've had to stockpile material until markets opened up. We've been able to flush all that material through, but there was a period of stockpiling. And then you have seen, or we have seen, not around here, but elsewhere in the country, some material that ended up degrading due to that stockpiling, and it ends up having to be landfilled. I read recent press accounts. Some local officials were suggesting that the only two options are to burn it, or to dump it. And that's actually not the case. Facilities in Southeast Michigan are all running at capacity and taking material. Our facility is processing over 300 tons per day. The facility in New Boston, I, my understanding is it's, it's running at or near capacity. And then, there are other facilities, you know, elsewhere. I think what we're seeing in some cases is folks not wanting to pay what it costs to get rid of the material. We have seen processors that are emphasizing material quality, and in some cases, increasing the prices for those haulers and the communities to dump at these facilities dramatically. And they're, you know, turning to the haulers and the communities and saying, "We need improvement in material quality, and we need for you to pay the costs associated with processing this material until the market clears." And that's an open-ended question. When is the market going to clear? We really don't know. Many of us that look at this from an economic perspective don't think it makes a lot of sense from, from the Chinese perspective either. But, you know, we can't control what goes on in, in China. And so, the expectation would have been that the markets would have normalized in May, and they just simply haven't. It's actually gotten worse in terms of the ability to export material. But we have seen some price modulation in the past month or so, because we're seeing domestic investment. We're seeing, you know, companies like Pratt Resources and Green Bay Packaging, or Pratt Industries, rather, and Green Bay Packaging, invest in domestic mills. We're seeing actually, one of the large Chinese companies, Nine Dragons, is investing aggressively into the U.S. market as well. So, I think what we're seeing is a shifting dynamic about, in the global commodities markets. And whether or not China comes back on board is anybody's guess. If they do, we think we'll see a skyrocketing of prices, because that material will get absorbed. But in the meantime, you know, we're seeing, we're seeing companies like Waste Management turn to their municipal customers and say, "Hey, we have a hard time getting rid of this stuff at the prices that we promised, or promised when we put into your contract. So, we'd, you know, we'd like a reconsideration of your, of your pricing." Vince was kind enough to forward me the couple of letters that Waste Management sent the city in June on this topic, and a couple of interesting observations. One is in one of the June 6 letter, Waste talks about being reliant on third-party processors, because they don't have processing capacity in this, in this market. And while that's true, that's a conscious decision that they made. They actually had processing capacity in this market up until a few years ago, and they made a conscious decision to not absorb that, that, you know, retain that capacity. And so, their reliance on others' infrastructure is a business decision they made, and presumably, you know, willingly entered into the risk associated with that. But, you know, that doesn't mean that, you know, they're not bearing increased costs. It just means that they're bearing increased costs associated with risk that they would presumably have known about. The June 6 letter also talks about the fact that when they went into your contract, they were paying 10 to 20 bucks a ton to get rid of recyclables, and that they may be paying in excess of $70. And then, the June 12 letter says that they used to pay $10 a ton, and now they're paying 95 for a difference of $85. And that's what they're using as a basis for their math, for increasing their, their price to their customers. Unfortunately, they haven't provided any documentation on what those numbers are. I've asked for that, and I was told that they wouldn't be providing that. So, it's a little bit challenging to really evaluate whether or not their formulas and their calculations are right. But assuming that they're being straightforward, and the costs are what their costs are, you know, their math seems right. But I do know that there are other haulers in Southeast Michigan that are paying, you know, between 40 and 80 dollars a ton. So, if Waste Management is a large customer, to say they're paying 95, I don't know if that's just a function of their business relationship with their number-one competitor in the country, Public Services, which owns the new Boston site, and also operates our Southfield location, as well as the facility, they used to operate a site in Roseville as well. So, it could be, could be a function of that. Having said that, there's no mechanism in your contract for reevaluating any, any prices as the market changes, and no sliding scale or revenue sharing has been proposed by Waste Management either, which I think is interesting. Because what they're basically doing is saying, "We, we entered into a contract with certain element of risk. Now, if the risk has come home to roost, you know, we want you to help bear that risk." But they don't really acknowledge that when the market's clear, that there would be some reward associated with that for the municipality. So, that, that would be something that if the city were interested in having a conversation about any changing rate structure, yeah, I'd insist that that be incorporated. The contract has no provisions that obligate you to agree to any price adjustments to reflect market conditions. In fact, the contract explicitly says no variable fees. And it uses examples, fuel recovery fees, disposal surcharges, or recycling commodity fees will be considered by the city. And then, of course, the contract also says any alterations, variations, modifications, or waivers, the provisions of this agreement should be valid only when they have been reduced to writing and signed, you know, by representatives of the contractor and the city. So, you have the controlling language within your existing contract to reject any price changes. I would also suggest that it's maybe worth considering Waste Management's financial results for the second quarter of 2018. Their revenues were $3.74 billion compared to $3.68 billion for the same period of year ago, for an increase of 1.63%. While their recycling revenue was down 19% for the quarter and 17% for the year, over the recycling revenue at $305 million is only 8.2% of their total revenue. So, you know, the CEO reported in their last SEC statement, "Our traditional solid waste business continues to perform exceptionally well in the second quarter, underpinning our strong financial results. And their free cash flow in the second quarter 2018 was $621 million, which was an increase of 19.4% over 2017." So, long story short, recycling, Waste Management's recycling component is suffering due to market, short-term market conditions that, you know, may end up being more medium-term, because the future's uncertain. But over, the company's overall financials are really quite strong. So, in the other sort of 20,000-foot view of this I would take, is that the advantage of contracting with a large vertically integrated company is that they are well-positioned to absorb any change in any particular segment of the industry, whether it's landfill fees, hauling costs, fuel costs, or, or tip fees at compost sites or recycling facilities. So, that's sort of the broad overview of the, of the conditions. There are concerns out there about material quality. It's really making it important that communities communicate well with their homeowners, to make sure they are putting the right things in, in the carts and the bins, so that when it gets to a processing facility, it is a high-quality product that can be separated into various commodities and shipped to market. The markets are still taking material, but not like they were a year ago, and certainly not like they were, you know, two and three years ago. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Vince, any thoughts?
No, I don't think at this point, no.
John, you have questions?
I have a couple of questions. Mike, what's, what's your definition of a high-quality recyclable material?
Well, there's a, there's a list in your contract, and that's really what we're talking about, is, is those materials that the processing facilities are able to accept and move to market. So, in general, we're talking about, you know, paper materials, cardboard, you know, clean, clean cardboard, clean newspaper, junk mail, office paper, that type of thing. We're talking about, you know, plastics, primarily ones and twos, but the other grades, fours through sevens, are also, you know, marketable, particularly fives. But of course, clean. And then, you know, glass and metal, you know, tin cans, aluminum cans, those types of things. What we see quite commonly is folks will be confused about things like resin codes. If you look on any, almost any plastic product, there's an arrows chasing arrows with the number in the middle. And that's commonly perceived to be a recycling symbol, when it's in fact just the coating system that the plastics industry uses to identify the type of plastic out of which that product is made. Ends up being quite misleading, because it looks an awful lot like a recycling symbol, and it's misleading and understandably confusing to a lot of homeowners. So, when they see this, they'll throw it in their recycling cart, instead of throwing it in the trash can like they should. Plastic bags are probably the biggest culprit. They're simply not recyclable, but they have the arrows chasing arrows on them, so people think they are. But then, people also will put other things like garden hoses, and extension cords, and cable, and sometimes lithium batteries, and all kinds of stuff in their carts or bins that ought not be in there. And that makes it more challenging for a site like a processing facility to weed that stuff out. It damaged the equipment. It can cause fires. It can cause inefficiencies in the processing equipment, and can lead to contamination of downstream materials, which do make it a problem for moving that stuff to market. But in general, if people are putting the right things in their carts or close to it, the processing facilities can take that material, separate out the wheat from the chaff, and then move that stuff to, to the appropriate, you know, global commodities markets. Again, it's just that commodities market's got a lot more stringent lately, accepting less in terms of contamination. And when I say contamination, like for example, in a bale of newspaper, you know, back a year ago, a year and a half, a year and a half ago, you could have 3% contamination, meaning, you know, things like plastic bags, and unsorted water bottles in your bale of newspaper. And China said, "No, we want it to be at half a percent." And if facilities can comply with that, they've just got to slow the lines down and put more labor on it. We did an inspection back in December. We're at 0.37% on a bale of newspaper. So, we can get there, but we need the help of the homeowners to make sure they're not making it unduly challenging for, for the processors. But in the meantime, because, you know, everybody, like Pratt Industries and all the downstream markets are saying, "Well, we know you can't ship it to China, so we're going to raise our standards and pay you less," it just makes it that much more challenging.
Okay. And the other question I have, what percentage of our, our waste is recyclable in Monroe?
You know, off the top of my head, I don't have that figure. If I recall correctly, Monroe was doing pretty well. They were in the mid-30s in terms of recyclables. But that includes, like most communities, that includes your, your organic content as well, so your yard waste. But if I recall correctly, Monroe, Monroe was doing pretty well. Their current tons per household, I have that number right here, because Waste Management did provide that in their calculations. I think it's in the mid-200 pounds per household per year. You know, they don't, yeah. Yeah, they don't have it on a, on a per household basis. But, yeah, you're doing, you're doing, you know, pretty well in terms of the amount of material that you're recycling. We expect that we'll see that increase over time, as more of your homeowners opt in for the carts that are available in your new contract. And there is the ability to absorb that material into the marketplace. It's just, again, it's, at what price in the short term, and then how, you know, steady will the markets be in the long term. And we're expecting that they'll improve. We know, again, we're seeing big investments domestically by companies like Pratt Industries, which is a big user of paper. They're opening up a facility in, in Ohio that should be online in about a year and a half. That'll take another half a million tons per year, which is a big number. So, we're seeing a lot of growth domestic, in domestic passing capacities. Within a day, it'll end up being good, because instead of shipping it across the ocean, we'll be able to just truck it to someplace in the Midwest.
Well, have we determined, based on what Waste Management is recommending or suggesting, you know, they're going from $10 to 95, based on how much we recycle, have we, have we computed a number of what that, that cost is going to be?
Well, they, they have, yeah. And they're saying it's about 12 bucks a household. Let me pull that, that letter out again. Yeah, there's two, there's two... Yeah, there's two things to that equation I think are, you know, kind of important. One is, are they providing the documentation? They're saying that you're annually recycling a thousand-seventy tons. I, you know, I haven't seen the documentation yet as to whether or not that's an accurate number, and that's one thing I would want to look at. If the city were interested in entertaining, opening up the contract for consideration, you'd want to get documentation as to those tons. And then the second thing is you'd want documentation as to what they're actually paying. If they say they were paying ten dollars a ton in one letter, but then in another letter say they're paying ten or twenty dollars a ton, and in one letter they're saying they might pay, you know, as much as seventy or more per ton, and in the next letter they're saying they're paying ninety-five a ton, you know, that's an eighty-five-dollar delta, and I'd want to make sure that those numbers are accurate. Because if you go with a thousand-seventy and you go with eighty-five-dollar-a-ton delta, then you're looking at a buck-five per household per month or...
Ninety thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, not an inconsequential number.
Right.
And, you know, you're under no obligation in your contract to come up with ninety thousand dollars a year, but if you, you know, if you saw your way clear to have that conversation at least, the very least they ought to be obligated to do is provide the documentation. And when I talked to Waste Management representatives on Friday, asking them about their documentation for their tip fee costs, they said they weren't going to provide it.
I mean, are we, Your Honor, another question, are we at a point where we need to think maybe about rebidding our Waste Management contract out, or is this just a matter of negotiating contract?
Well, I don't think you're at a point where you want to rebid your contract. I think it's just really a matter of whether you want to tell Waste Management, "No," and let them come back and, you know, make another argument about why you might want to reconsider and say, "Yes," or, you know, go into a conversation with them about, you know, what would be the quid pro quo. But at this point, you know, the contract, and of course, the city attorney would want to weigh in on this, but I think the contract's pretty clear, you're under no obligation to absorb any costs that they may be incurring. They went into this contract with eyes wide open, they know what the risks are in the marketplace. Now, you know, nobody expected China to slam a door shut because it doesn't make any sense, but that as it may, this could have happened to anything. It could have been a fuel embargo and they can't, you know, the diesel prices skyrocketed. It could have been, you know, a landfill crisis because they had to shut a landfill down for an environmental catastrophe, and it could have been any number of things that could have been risks that they presumably understood going into their business arrangement with the city. We do know that industry-wide companies, whether it's Republic or Waste Management or the smaller haulers, are all turning to their customers and, you know, asking for reconsideration of the rates, and some contracts do have those provisions in them, others don't. Yours happens to not have such a provision, other than new taxes, and that's something that's obviously always unforeseen. But at this point, you know, I sort of take the long view that, you know, trash and landfill and solid waste hauling companies are doing actually quite well right now, and so one small component of their business is suffering because of some global commodities markets shenanigans. I don't know that that necessarily justifies, you know, municipalities having to step up to the plate and bear those costs that, you know, again, one would assume that these multibillion-dollar companies understood when they went into those contracts.
I guess... I was just going to ask, Your Honor, I was going to ask the city manager what his, what course of action he's looking at.
I guess along with that, as Mike has mentioned, there's letters that are out there that have a variety of, of the same amounts within them, has the city received an official correspondence from Waste Management, or is it still discussions of being asked for or not provided?
I think Waste Management is acutely aware that we're under no obligation. I talked with Mr. Conaway back in early June, that was part of the conversation. And the fact that I sat on it for, not going to say two months, but almost two months, so that there was no sense of urgency on my part to have the conversation. The one thing that I do think is pertinent, is what Mike gets to, is the quality of the recycling stream. That may be one of the areas where they might start being a little more aggressive on trying to control that stream, and so our communication to our residents related to that is very, very important, I think, so. But other than that, I wouldn't, you know, expect any action from part of the council other than just be aware what's going on in the marketplace. And I would agree that that is the one area where there's some risk, because the contract, and as in all contracts, it specifies what the acceptable material stream is, and there are some upper limits to how much non-recyclable material homeowners can end up putting in their bins and their carts. And if Waste Management picks up a load in Monroe and takes it to a processing facility and that processing facility rejects it or charges Waste Management because of that poor material quality, then in theory, that can be passed down to the community based on your contract. So it's important to continue to monitor, you know, what's going in the carts, what's going in the bins, properly, you know, educating and promoting what goes in the carts and bins. And then if Waste Management comes back and says, "You know, our contamination rates are too high and the processor won't accept them," then that's a situation that is perhaps somewhat different than what they're currently asking for, and they'll need to, you know, provide full documentation on that.
So I'll assume that when recyclables are removed from the city and taken to the location, there's a practice or protocol of how that's accounted for from destination A to B, or does it just show up?
No, what typically happens is Waste Management, and I'll just, you know, be very specific, so Waste Management picks up materials in your community and they have business arrangements with Republic Services, which operates the facility in New Boston. And, you know, on any given day, they'll take so much material, and they'll generally take material from Waste Management and as well as the other haulers in the area, and they'll take it at whatever price they get to dictate, and so they may tell Waste Management, you know, "Here's our business arrangement, and it's going to be X price," and they may, another hauler may have a different price. But it all goes, you know, according to, you know, when it's getting picked up, it's delivered to a facility, it goes on a scale, it gets logged in, so everybody's tracking what's being collected from where.
Is the management of the quality of the items that are picked up what gets delivered? So I'm sure there's somebody who does that. You don't want to be mixed with others that doesn't have the quality either way.
Right, right, so yeah, they'll, so generally, you know, if a contractor's picking up, say, in Monroe, they're going to pick a full truckload up and that's what's going to go to that facility, and then the processor, you know, in theory can look at those truckloads as they tip and go, "Yeah, that's a good load or that's a bad load," and trace it back to where it came from if necessary.
Thanks, I think the point is that we have messaging to our community to make sure that we are providing the right materials so this doesn't become an issue later, so it's a good point, and we'll figure out how to communicate that as well to the residents.
Yes, sir.
Question over here, Andrew?
Yeah, I'll try and make it brief, I understand we're short on time. Is volume any alleviation to this problem? And do you have any numbers on if the city of Monroe's volume has increased since the bins have been implemented?
Waste Management hasn't provided that information, and I haven't dug into it with Patrick or Vince yet, but I would imagine it has because it's typically the case, but I just haven't looked at the volume. And really, at this stage of the game, it's not a matter of volume, it's a matter of, you know, what the market's going to bear. And I haven't seen, I haven't seen the haulers that are asking their municipal customers for relief differentiate based on the amount per household is being generated, it's just, "Here's our total amount, and here's the cost associated with that amount." So to some extent, there's a price component based on volume, but it's all not really, that scale doesn't change, that per-ton price, that metric doesn't change based on whether you're generating X or Y per household.
I have to imagine that there's a lot of fixed costs involved, you know, paying the guys, and fueling the truck, you know, coming around to visit your house is going to cost a certain amount whether they're picking anything up or not.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan? Just one more question. So basically, out of the letters that they have presented to us, they basically have not stated there's a problem with the quality of the recycles.
No.
That's something they don't want to divulge, they really haven't divulged with any information, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thanks a lot, Mike.
I know we have a couple more items. Thank you, Mike, that was good information, nice presentation.
Thank you. Vince has my information, if he has any more questions, he can reach out and I'll be happy to respond.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Mr. Pastu?
Next item, we talked a little bit about it the last meeting, about North Custer Road, potentially trying to fit that mill and fill project into this current construction season. Mr. Lewis, there he is, had a quick PowerPoint, and I think Councilmember Eiko Angeli also had kind of prepared a PowerPoint maybe to complement this discussion, so.
Do we have, Mr. Pastu, do we have time for this? I thought we had a, you have a closed session at six forty-five?
Well, that's just, we can carry it on afterwards.
You move it? Okay, I just want to make sure, I need to know how quickly I need to move here. Sorry, I'll have to turn a little bit, this is a little bit awkward, not used to this presentation. Honorable Mayor and Council Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services, go ahead and tap that on there. And we talked about this before, and I'm just going to blow down these as quickly as we can here. I know there was an article in the paper on Sunday, I did sit with Ms. Portius to talk about some of our upcoming projects, and Mr. Pastu and I had talked about including that in the discussion. The North Custer Road resurfacing project, we had that slated as our 2021 federal aid project. That was going to fall in line after Front Street, which was going to be a two-season project, 2019 and 2020. We're really thinking it's not going to make it till 2021 based on its condition, it seems to be deteriorating quite a bit. Road project area is a little over a mile in length from the city line, which is about three-hundred or so feet west of Cranbrook, basically where the curbs start, to somewhere around Telegraph, we haven't decided exactly where the stopping point will be. We're still waiting on a new tonnage cost because we're using a slightly different asphalt mix, but we're estimating that as around a half a million dollar project. We're planning this, the easiest, straightforward project with actually no design plans, it'll just be a three-inch milling fill, and the reason for that is that the curbs are in good shape. So we only have about four-hundred feet of curb work, I think, in there, so it's not much, just where we have little spots. We would propose, based on the fact we did only get one bid this year on our million-dollar resurfacing project for our other local streets, we would propose entertaining that at the next council meeting as a change order to Al's Asphalt, who is our contractor this year, as well as the last two years. They have indicated they're definitely interested in the work, and that, like I said, they're still getting us just that price on the different mix for the heavier traffic, heavier truck mix. And we're, go ahead, now Michelle, and we definitely like to do the work in the fall, but if for some reason the weather doesn't dictate that, we can hold that over till the spring as well. Existing cross-section, we've got three inches of asphalt on what we believe is about a seven-inch concrete base. This was an older state highway, actually it was, the last time it was reconstructed, we did it in 2006, but it was reconstructed, I think, in eighty-one, when it was still under the County Road Commission jurisdiction. There, like I said, there's very little road, very little curb work required. What has turned into a more controversial discussion point, is not intended to be controversial, but we're considering removing the islands, those were fairly controversial when they went in, but we think we can put in some more intense striping and signage, things that will improve that. Part of, and I'll get into this in a minute with the islands, but, and as I mentioned, we can do the project as a log job, that's an M dot term, that basically means you can just describe it, go out there and field-mark the curb locations, and give instructions to the contractor in writing, so we don't have to prepare base plans, survey work, or any of that. And we can advance that in time, like we mentioned, to deal with the contractor's time window, which they do have. Projects shouldn't be very long in time to actually do. Go ahead, Michelle. Thank you. Freezing ice?
We need to go home.
All right, a couple of questions I wanted to step forward and answer, because as you might expect, I'm throwing a project at you without a whole lot of background. And we did talk about this during the capital improvements a little bit, we didn't get very far in it. I sort of put this on my wish list, a project that if we could get to them, this would be one that has a lot of popular support, we'd get a lot of calls on it. I said, "Why this project?" Couple of things, it's got high traffic. Most of our street projects we're doing this year are fairly low traffic, our local streets, things like Stockton, Sylvan, Parkwood, Scottwood, the west section of Maple, not a lot of high-traffic corridors on there. So, as a traffic, as a traffic volume street, it's one of our tops in the city. It is a gateway to the city, it's highly visible to our, a lot of our visitors come in and out of Munson Park. Even though the park is in front of the county section, most of them will traverse our section to get there. One of the important things we look at, too, is our maintenance costs. And when we get into scoping projects and setting out our priority list every year, one of the questions that I ask the maintenance staff is, "How much do we spend on this? How many days does it take us to cold patch?" I can say there were multiple occasions this past winter and spring where we were out there for multiple days at a time. To do end-to-end, I think this last winter, the last stabilizing one, the spring, I think we were out there for four days. And that's a lot of material, cold patches not all that cheap. So we're looking at that as a way to minimize the cost each winter, as well as to take advantage of pricing by bidding it earlier. I will mention our street survey, we do a numerical rating on that one, we use it as a guide. Usually when a street gets to a rating of eight-point-zero, it's on our immediate watch list, and we try to pick from those each year. But you do have streets like North Custer that will hit the watch list a little sooner because the curbs are good. You get one, zero to four on curbs, zero to ten on street surface. So there's, and you need an extra point if it's a major street. The fall 2017 survey pegged North Custer as an average of six-point-eight. However, I will tell you, we haven't done our drive yet, but we're, it's going to be worse than that based on what we've seen in the field. So we're in the range where it's reasonable to do that. Then the second part of the question is, "Why now?" And part of that, part of that answer is, we've gotten more money from the state than we expected this year. Some of that was actually budgeted, we anticipated some of that increase, but I think there's between two and three hundred thousand that we did not anticipate would be that high. So about half of this is what I call unbudgeted money, and then we have some flexibility in our fund balance. So each year, and I did a study ten years ago on this, and it's not getting any better, we find construction inflation is outpacing the general inflation. So in other words, if we were to borrow money for a project, which we're not talking about for this one, but if we were to borrow money for the project, it would actually behoove us to do that because it's going to cost us less in interest than we're going to lose if we were to wait for construction inflation to take hold. It's especially, especially relevant in the construction industry in Michigan because we've got very few contractors, lack of skilled trades, and that capacity just hasn't built up yet. So as the state puts more money into things, all we're doing is spreading that among the same number of contractors. So there is an advantage, the sooner we can do a project, the better off it is. As I mentioned, the maintenance cost savings, if we were to get on it this year, we would save this winter's cold patching, whatever costs those are going to be. And I said, "Most of the work can be completed in a week," that's probably overstating it. Any work we were to do, if we were to take islands out, that would be some prep work in there, but the milling and paving is really a straight-up, straight-up kind of project. They would stage that, keep the road open with flaggers, and probably do it in a week if we had a week with no rain. As I mentioned, we have the additional funding that is available. Contractor already can't start onto our street projects until after Labor Day, we're not holding them up to do this project. Our water main program is on the other streets, and that's a challenge we have. That's a challenge we don't have on North Custer. We do not have any other infrastructure needs, which is why we can accelerate it, we don't have to wait for anything else. And whether this is relevant or not, I don't know, but the County Road Commission just micro-surfaced their section of it, west, basically west of ours, and so there's that appearance factor, too. I mean, it's an intangible, it's definitely not driving the project, but that's one of the things that you hit the city limits and you get a worse road on the same corridor. So again, one of those little factors that might come into play. I think I've only got a couple more. Pedestrian refuge islands, and I know I've, we've had some discussion on this, have taken some calls, most of our feedback from the engineering department over the twelve years they've been in place has been that they aren't really meeting their true goals, which were basically intended to calm traffic and provide pedestrian refuge. Now, they may slow traffic down to some degree. We've had a number of hits on these, and I mean, a large number of hits on these. The challenge with these are that we've got a lot of driveways in this area, a lot of driveways, a lot of intersections, it's hard to develop a true traffic calming attitude here. North Dixie Highway, by comparison, we have long runs, we're able to plant a number of bushes, it gives you that psychological feeling that you're truly on a little more constrained area. We just can't develop that length because of the driveways that we have conflicting. So we've never really been able to put much in the way of landscaping here, we've just left them grass. But we've got a number of hits all over the place, and so if that's an indication they're getting hit a lot, they seem to be, we probably have multiple restitution claims per year with people mowing down signs and damaging some curbs here and there, so. We've only got eleven feet in that turn lane, so it's more like ten between the curbs. It's hard to develop that psychology where a pedestrian feels truly comfortable crossing half the street at a time. Crossing half the street then standing in the island, and that was further exacerbated, we did, you can see, I guess you can't see in this photo, but on the nose of those near the intersection, we had, we had a large number of people that were turning the corner from either Cranbrook or Richards, hitting the nose of those. So we actually flattened that out and made the, made the front edge of that mountable. The challenge with that is that diminishes the pedestrian's ability to feel safe at that location. So what we're looking at is if, and again, this is a policy call, that's why we're putting in front of council for your, for your discussion, to let you know we're thinking of that. If we leave them, that's fine, if we take them out, that's fine, but we want to do something, at least something to replace that. So I gave you a couple of examples of some crosswalk signage, the one on the right is one we have in downtown Monroe, that's West Front Street, and those are the in-crosswalk signage. Now, obviously, those could fit in the turn lane, we might put those closer to the traveled way a little bit, we could... put those closer to the traveled way, uh, a little bit. We can use two signs even. I like the multiple strong yellow-green signs as well. And we're talking about all of these, not just one, but the multiple strong yellow-green signs with the pedestrian crossing ahead and then the one right at the crossing with an arrow pointing down to it. So those are two things we're looking at. Go ahead. Higher visibility crosswalks. Now, we already have these. Um, there, there's a couple of different ones and I'll show you on the next slide what those are. But this is an example of what they call ladder, which has got kind of the, the continental, which is the solid boxes with the stripes on the outside of those. Um, and then I also like the pavement markings here where you've got the pedestrian crossing. You put those on the pavement in advance of the, of the crosswalk. So you kind of feel like you could put this sign at the advanced warning one and then you have your high-visibility crosswalk. I'll go to the next one. I gave you a couple of fun examples here too, if you really wanted to get wild and crazy. The black boxes, your traditional ones. Uh, we could seek corporate sponsorship. I found one that was, looked like McDonald's french fries. And, um, the other two on the ends are actually pictures I took when we were in White Horse Yukon. They actually had, uh, I'm not sure why they had red, white and blue. It's turned into blue, pink, white and blue, um, with the sun fading, but they did have a rainbow crosswalk on there, which I thought those were kind of interesting, uh, interesting alternatives. I would still advocate for your traditional ladder crossing, but, uh, just to show you what else is out there. And if McDonald's wants to kick in some money, we put some french fry ones up there, that's probably all right too. But, uh, I think that's all I had other than the recommendations. At this point, we're recommending we award the work at the next council meeting, um, completed in the fall as long as the weather cooperates. And again, if we found ourselves into mid to late October, we, we could hold it off and do it. There's, the contractor would hold their pricing. Uh, we've typically found this contractor is willing to do that for work that they know they'll have in the spring. At this point, saying we think we could probably take the islands out, but again, I'm not going to lose any sleep over it if council collectively says, no, we really like those. Let's leave those in there. Um, I don't have a problem with that either. Um, I'd like to install, if we do take the islands out, those continental or ladder crosswalks, the in-street signs, the advance, yellow-green advanced warnings and the pavement marking text on the street there. So that's what we're looking at. There's my hopefully abbreviated version. Uh, Mayor and Council and Mr. Pastu, hopefully I, and hopefully I took a blow through the first, first wave for now.
Yeah, our, our thought was with this additional funding that we had, uh, about 250,000 in use of some existing fund balance, we could, you know, look at doing a project that we had programmed actually a few years, but its condition is, you know, the road surface is, is pretty bad. But, uh, for the council to consider it, uh, you know, clearly time would be of the essence. So, um, we'll open it up to thoughts, comments, suggestions, uh, that type of thing.
Andrew?
Well, I have a fair bit to say about this particular issue. Um, I just wanted to make sure that I heard you right, Director Lewis. We don't plan on bidding this out. We just plan on expanding the work to a, to a contractor with, that, that has a, a different job in the city? That has been contracted a different?
That would be correct. And I think with part of what's driving that decision is the fact that we did only receive one bid for our resurfacing program this year and the time of year. Taking it out three more weeks does put us in the danger zone of not getting it done in the fall. So, um, if that's a, if that's an issue of major importance, then we can, can take this back out and do it, but it would probably be spring construction.
I don't know if it's an issue of major importance and the rest of the council might have a different opinion than me, but, uh, I think it's an issue of importance. Um, I mean, we start bidding out jobs to, or giving out jobs, because at this point we're not bidding it, to contractors without bidding them first, I think we, we run into some serious risks. I mean, after that, you start running into rumors of somebody's cousin on city council that, you know, knows somebody that asked Al's Asphalt and they're getting the jobs without even bidding them. I, I think I just want to stay away from that. Let's, I mean, if, if they end up being the only ones who bid on the job, um, and you want to have a relatively short period of, of, on, on the turnaround for this, well, then they're going to be the only one that bids on the job, but I'd like to at least put it through the paces. Um, that's, that's my feeling. I don't know how the rest of the council feels. Um, I would also be very opposed to taking out the, uh, taking out the islands. If you wanted to push them further out so that the trucks have less issues turning left, uh, perhaps that's something we could discuss, but I know that, uh, this particular issue, it, several residents have brought to my attention, uh, how unsafe they feel. I mean, it's, it's, it's across the street. It's between a neighborhood and a park. And you got traffic going through there at 40 miles an hour. I mean, that's exactly, you got two lanes of traffic, opposing traffic with a left turn lane, which is exactly what they're proposing on doing at, at Monroe Street. And I would dare someone to cross Monroe Street without a stoplight being there. I mean, that's what we're talking about here. So I think if you take out the islands, I'm going to advocate putting in stop signs. We're not driving faster through there. I'll tell you that. Um, so that, I, again, that's how I feel about the issue. I know that I walked to that park with, with my wife and son. Uh, you know, I live in the back end of that neighborhood, so this is, this is a, you know, an issue that would affect me and, and the, and my neighbors personally. So I, I would, I, I like the idea of the green signs if you want to put those up. I'm not opposed to putting some lights on them to get them flashing. I know that on, on some, um, you can, you can push the button as you're flashing and, as you're crossing and they'll flash as you cross. Uh, I don't think that's a bad idea if we want to take out the islands in lieu of doing something like that. But I, it's few and far between where I can make it across that intersection as a pedestrian and not use the, uh, the center island. Uh, it's, it's a rare occurrence. Um, I know that the fire station is right there as well and sometimes they have, they have trouble getting the trucks in and out because cars are trying to cut past them as they're, as they're backing in, uh, to their thing. So I, I don't, I'm not really, uh, I mean, the fact that we have as many incidents with those curbs with vehicles, I mean, I understand if the, if the large vehicles have trouble turning left, but if, if we're talking about speed incidents of, of cars hitting those curbs on the islands going through there, that's exactly the reason you want them there. So that they're not hitting any pedestrians that are crossing through there, but I don't.
I guess on the curbs and the islands, I think my, my note there is what's the, what's the causation? What's the purpose? I'm sure we can get some reports from the police department and which of those may be involved with, uh, intoxicated drivers or just people that don't know how to make left turns and drive with the curbs. I'd, I'd look for some data on that as well. Um, I think.
Your Honor, if, if Michelle would just give me five minutes, I took a look at the article in Sunday's paper in the city manager's report and I put together a, a quick slideshow. I'm not going to get into the detail that Patrick did, but I just want to give you some thoughts that we should think about, uh, regarding the repaving. Uh, North Custer Elm Avenue from the city limits to Dixie is approximately three miles in length. And the section that we're talking about, from the west city limits to YMCA is 1.25 miles and it's three, three lanes. A large part of the, of Elm, the Elm Custer segment, it's three lanes from up to, up to, up to the YMCA where it goes down to two over the rail crossing and it flares back out to three lanes between the rail crossing and just past Elm Avenue where it goes down to two lanes until you get to Godfrey and there's a small left-hand turn pocket. And then when it gets to, uh, Monroe Street, there's a, a left-hand turn lane. And then the next block between Monroe and McComb, it's three lanes. And then after McComb Street, all the way out to Dixie, it's two. And when you drive it in its, in its entirety, you can feel the difference between the speed of the vehicles that are going down three lanes versus two lanes. Okay, so that's a consideration. Uh, Michelle, would you hit it? Uh, there are only two islands on this segment. One is at the entrance to Cranbrook and one is at the entrance to Riverside. The islands, when they were put in, were designed to provide a safe haven for people crossing, as Andrew had mentioned during his comments. Hit the next slide. This is what Patrick was talking about. The islands were actually reduced in size and this is the pedestrian crossings. Next slide. Uh, this is what our islands look like. Next slide. This is what they should look like. This is a traffic calming device. The islands that we installed did not have, uh, irrigation. They did not have an environment for street trees. They did not provide the traffic calming visibility that they are in this community. Hit the next slide. This is actually a video driving that segment. If you can go down to the bottom of the slide and the arrow should come up for the video, yeah, right there at the bottom, and just hit, just hit drive. Pardon me, I'm taking this as I'm driving at 25 miles an hour. Don't want to disclose that to the mayor, but, uh, there's only, that's the only way I could do it. And this is what, you can see the truck, how slow they're going. I, it appears like I'm going fast. I'm really not. I'm going about 23 miles an hour. You can see that there are curb cuts, but in some areas where there are curb cuts, they didn't put a curb cut through the island. People are actually using the islands. They go to some parts of it and they actually do a Michigan left. And then coincidentally, that's where the county road in this community starts. Okay? That's, that's what an island should look like. Our islands are not functioning like that. So hit the next slide, Michelle, if you would be so kind.
This one?
Yeah. So, I mean, either we install more islands the correct way with irrigation and trees, or we get rid of the islands and we reduce the three lanes to two lanes. And we put a dedicated bike lane as part of the complete streets. And we make, we make North, North Custer the same cross-section as the balance of Elm Street is. Because when you go down Elm Street between Rossler and Monroe Street, the, the traffic is a lot slower and it's a nicer drive than what it is on North Custer because it's so wide. Eight to 12,000 cars a day doesn't warrant a three-lane, uh, cross-section with a dedicated left-hand turn lane. We would be getting traffic calming if we don't put the islands and we'd be get traffic calming with two lanes. So the, the suggestion I have is, since we, a couple of months ago, decided with the reduction, the potential reduction of the DTE valuation, to take a look at a commensurate reduction in the, the scope of the fire station, I think we need to start taking a look at a, a significant reduction or a commensurate reduction in the amount of roads that we have to build. Uh, yeah, it's going to be cheap doing a mill and resurface, but just think about how much we have to pay in the future for maintaining three lanes, how much we pay in addition for snow removal to keep snow off of three lanes and what the stormwater discharge is on three lanes that's right adjacent to the River Raisin where we've spent millions of dollars on cleanup. Roads are one of the biggest polluters to streams and rivers with oils and salts. So we're, we're just adding to that problem as well. My, my suggestion is that the money's going to be there next year, that we step back and take a look at what a redesign would be of North Custer. And to go along with Councilman Felder, we bid it out along with the bids for West Front and see what kind of bids we get. Maybe because we're bidding several projects, we would get more competitive bids and lower prices than bidding only one project. But, Your Honor, that, those are my comments relative to this project.
Other comments, I think, Brian, you have?
Yeah, I, I do. Uh, right in front of my business downtown in Front Street, we have the pedestrian cross rocks right there and the, the signage is visible there. And I can tell you for a fact that there are cars that actually stop before they get there and there's nobody crossing the walk at all. So it is a, a barrier. People do stop. They do slow down for those, for that signage. So I, I think that, that bears out a little bit there as far as slowing traffic down. Uh, I can tell you the two lanes on, on Elm, which I also live on Elm, uh, cars speed by at 50 miles an hour regularly, uh, right by my house, uh, which I have the turn lane right in front of my home. And I can tell you that, uh, that, that doesn't stop them.
Right. I can't, I can't believe that traffic goes 50 miles an hour down Elm Street. Maybe one, maybe an errant car, but every time I drive Elm Street, the, the cars.
I live there, John.
Well, they're not going fast.
I'm telling you, they're going fast.
I, I would, I would ask the mayor for, you know, maybe the, the police department can take a look at their data and see what we got in the.
I think that's part of, it follows up my first comment about the islands. And, you know, I, I know because they run over the signs and run over the curbs and follow the oil path down the road and they find there's a car that's on the side of the road and there's been arrests made. So I, the causation of the accidents is one thing, the turning. I didn't notice in the video, which I found interesting, because we tried to minimize that island just because people weren't making appropriate left-hand turns. They always want to cut the turn. I think it's because they want to get in front of the traffic quicker that's coming from the right. That's one, that's one complication. And they flattened it out, but I noticed in the video, there was one that was flattened out, but it was at the opposite end where the crosswalk was. It makes a difference. It's right, right there at the intersection. You go into the, the subdivision there, there's the boulevard there. I think that island may be even longer than the one that's on Monroe or, uh, North Custer. So, uh, I, I think someday that we could probably collect, uh, to help assess this. I know, as was presented by Patrick, if, if it moves forward, it is of a time issue. If it doesn't, then there's the data might help us provide, uh, some of that as well. So I, I think the island, if you don't have the islands, then if you're just going to take it and make the bike lanes, it's still the same distance going to have to be plowed, still the same distance going to have to be cleaned, it's still the same amount of distance that you have, uh, runoff. So the, the islands are odd when you see them because they are so short and they're only of specific location. Uh, there's clearly different thoughts on having extended islands too. I'll see if there's any other comments from those here because we have to keep going.
You know, I think based on the comments tonight, there's a little more work. Want to say Patrick, he put this together pretty quick, hoping that we might be able to get this in this season. Uh, but, uh, but clearly I think we got some more dialogue that needs to take place. Uh, the money's not going anywhere as discussed earlier. So we might be able to put it into a 2019 project, so.
We may get additional comments from the residents out there as others that are traveling.
Uh, Your Honor, just one, maybe Patrick or Vince can, in addition, if we were to back this into, into spring bidding with West Front, are there any other projects that we're anticipating on bidding for resurfacing next year?
I'll, let me, let me address the issue of bidding it with West Front. I, I want to make sure that this is not, this is not, no, West Front Street is a federal aid job. We're not going to be able to package this with it. And the part of the concern with West Front, as I stated on, in Sunday's article, is that we're trying to do an advanced construct on that so that we can carry over federal funds. You can't carry them over from year to year. You can pull them ahead. And the concern is that based on the size of that project, we'd be looking at potentially our 19, 20 and our, potentially even our $21. We cannot bid North Custer with anything out, with the Front Street job. I don't know what our local program's going to look like next year, um, because I don't know, uh, you know, what the council priorities are going to be and we haven't driven our streets yet. There will be additional asphalt streets, but many of them are going to be of the replace curbs, replace driveways, you know, a little more hefty project. And I really think that's a part of the reason we don't get more bids on our jobs because a lot of contractors want to just do the county highway type work, mill, pave it, get in, get out, don't mess around with all the driveways and curbs. And that's a lot of what we have in front of us on our local street system. So there will be other asphalt projects, um, but I don't want anyone thinking there's going to be $3 million worth of asphalt projects. It's going to be maybe 500,000, something like that.
As we collect that information and I'm sure that our next meeting will at least have an update and see where it's at and a decision to be made, uh, what we award with.
Thank you. If you may understand, I'm not, I don't plan on bringing this out to the meeting on the 5th of September, so I think we'll just.
Down the road. From the timeframe that, which it is, it may be down the road instead.
Are we, Your Honor, would we be, if we're going to delay this until next spring, are we, can we work with the, uh, can the police department do, uh, some?
Traffic study.
Traffic study, speed testing, radar, kind, you know, that kind of stuff where they do the speed tests just to see what, what we're looking at?
Sure.
Oh, thanks.
I know it's, we're down for all the projects as well, just to get a idea to make sure we're in the same, everybody's, what we think it is actually what it is.
What it is.
Sounds good. I only have one more item.
Your Honor, I prefer just to go, move forward on to, uh, you know, the other, the last three items. If we can just consider adjournment and then go into closed session.
I don't see any objections because then we have the closed session. So at this point, I'll adjourn the work session.